Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinturne. Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum. Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, Dr. Horneck, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Um, hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would like a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Madam Chairman, I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Horneck.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we will begin with consideration of National School Lunch Week Resolution. And Ms. Blair, our school nutrition supervisor is here. Ms. Blair?
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Horneck. It's my pleasure to present that the week of October 9th is National School Lunch Week. The theme is Level Up with School Lunch, and that challenges the students to take their nutrition goals to the next level. We will have many of our favorites on that week, and I challenge you to come to one of our school lunches and see what's going on. Feel free to come to the cafeteria, get lunch, enjoy, or just see what's being offered, and maybe see what the kids are eating. It is really fun to watch kids eat, because they play with their food, and it's pretty cool. So, I could go on. But also, just on another note, the week before, which is next week, is National Farm School Week. So, please feel free to drop by. On Wednesday, we will have Papa Weaver's sausage with our breakfast for lunch meal, as is a tradition. And of course, we are featuring Thornton River apples in our schools. But you know, the information that I provided talks about all the lunches that are served throughout the nation. Here in Orange County, we serve 3,000 lunch per day and 2,000 breakfast per day. So, these kids are eating, and they're enjoying the food.
Food is excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
They could take that from me. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
While we have Ms. Blair up, would anyone like to make the motion to accept this resolution? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution for October 9th and 13th.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
Before you take that, just add in one thing. This is an opportunity. Ms. Byron's been spending a lot of time trying to modernize and enhance just the letterhead a little bit. And so, this is, she worked on this and was able to put this together using a program called Canva. And this is really well done, and we can interchange department names, et cetera. So, thanks, Ms. Byron, for doing that. I think it might be the first time that you had a chance to see kind of the new letterhead. So, thank you, Laura, for that. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your support. And Ms. Blair? Next is Letter B, and I know that Mr. Arnold is here, and this was brought forward at the September 11th meeting. And Ms. Arnold, if you want to catch us, the board, up one more time on the annual contract for the architectural and engineering services.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Last time, we presented our recommendation to approve the second renewal for HDH Architects. The original contract was signed in 2021 with the opportunity for up to four renewals. And we've been very satisfied with the performance of HDH and their cost effectiveness as far as providing a design without a lot of extra expense. And they are also involved in finishing up, of course, the Gordon Barber addition. And they are also working on the design for the new metal roof at Gordon Barber to be done next summer. So, at this time, we'd like to request the board's approval for the extension of that contract.
Are there any questions of Mr. Arnold? If not, can we have a motion to accept this contract, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the annual renewal of this contract as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Arnold will stay here. We're moving along with Gordon Barber. We're approaching the end of construction and finishing that. And now, we are to the point where we want to get our furniture in, so we can begin the process of moving into the addition. So, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck. We've been working with Meteor Education, which is a school furniture vendor that is pre-qualified through the Omni Cooperative Purchasing Network. And we finalized our recommendations of their proposal to provide, deliver, assemble, and install the complete furnishings for the addition and ramp room at Gordon Barber. And that includes not only the classrooms and resource rooms, office, but also furniture in the common areas in that big open space, and even in the outdoor classroom on the side of the connector. The lead time for this order is six to eight weeks, and so, we're actually ahead of ourselves with the construction, meaning that this item is now on the critical path. And I don't do this very often, but I'd like to recommend approval on first reading, if possible. Any questions from the board?
I mean, there's nothing attached here. What's the dollar value?
That is...
Maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, it's in very fine print on the upper part there. It's $186,438.19.
Oh, thank you.
And this is to be done during Thanksgiving? Is that what I read, Doug?
If all goes well, with the lead time being six to eight weeks, that should get it here by Thanksgiving, and be able to move to proceed.
All right.
But I'm willing to make the motion, but what's the company? Is it Mentor Education, or is it OMNIA?
No, the company is Meteor Education. Omni Cooperative Purchasing Network is similar to the cooperative purchasing group that we use for the earthquake repairs back when, and for the walkway, the walkway connectors.
Okay, I make the motion we approve the expenditure to Mentor Education to serve furniture for Gordon Barber Elementary School in the amount of $186,438.19.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We appreciate that very much. At this time, I will bring forward Mr. Hill, Director of Technology, to discuss surplus items. Greg?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Horneck, I'm coming to you again with more surplus items that we have. The bulk item in there, you might see student Chromebooks, those have reached the end of their warranty period. Many of them are broken. These are replaced on a regular basis. Everything else is, has either been replaced on its regular replacement cycle, or are just items that are broken, or are no longer functional with the rest of the technology.
So, can we have a motion to go ahead and accept this, so they can get it on the website and get it out of here?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I think we accept the surplus property disposal.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, we will move forward. And Dr. Wolfrey and Dr. Honaker are here to provide an update on our, the school division's current enrollment, with information as where we stood on the 10th day of school, as well as more recently where we stood, I believe, on the September 20th is the other date. Ladies?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, this is just a very brief report to update you on our student enrollment. Just as a reminder, students are considered enrolled when they report to school. So, this does not include students who had been previously on our roll. They are counted as enrolled when they first report for that school year. So, the first slide that we have for you shows a trend of four years of students enrolled on the 10th day of school by each school. Noticeably, the largest increase in enrollment was at Lucas Grove Primary, and the greatest decreases on the 10th day were at Lucas Grove Middle and the high school. And then, the next slide, we have the total for the division, which at that point just showed an increase of 10 students. Just to provide a more recent update, we have the enrollment as of September 20th, as Dr. Horneck said. So, again, the same slide again, but on September 20th. And again, you'll see that we also had an increase, a pretty sizable increase at Gordon Barber, Lucas Grove Primary, and then decreases, the largest decreases were at the high school and Orange Elementary. Then, overall enrollment for the division, just showing an increase from last year to this year, at that same point in time, at September 20th, of around 60 students. Again, just so, just information for you regarding our student enrollment as of September.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Question. Does the total enrollment for, we end at the end of the, in other words, is this pretty? I know the numbers are accurate. I'm not trying to ask that. What I'm really saying is, is this pretty close to what our enrollment will be?
That's hard to predict. I mean, it does fluctuate.
No, I mean, you have four years here, so you have three years that you know the answer of it.
Well, we're trending just a little bit higher than we have been, so it's hard to know for sure.
I mean, you're talking in 100 or something like that?
I would think so.
Do we do this account at the end of the year as well?
We haven't done a report. We do use dates for average daily membership, and those dates are, I'll defer to Dr., to Mr. Honaker.
March 31st. So, you have September 30th and March 31st are kind of your two major ADM days, your average daily membership that are used when calculating funding. And so, those are kind of the two dates that really, your major ones. The beginning of the year is always a little hit or miss. So, you have students, so if they don't come to school on the first day, they're considered a no-show until they come back. And so, every school is working through their list with support from particularly Susan's office to make sure that we get the students that we know are supposed to be in school, so that we don't drop out. And that's how, that's why it's really important, particularly for the high school, when they are looking at their dropout rate. Because the dropout rate actually begins the minute students roll up in our power school system from the middle school to the high school, they are expected to be in attendance. And so, students who do not come to school, and we do, and whether they move or whatever, we don't actually get a formal records request from an approved accredited institution. Those students are already, is early on as before ninth grade starts, or as ninth grade starting, start to hit us on the dropout. So, the dropout rate is actually a cumulative number over the course of four years. It's not just, there are supposed to be 400 kids in the senior class at the high school this year, 395 showed up. So, our dropout rate is, you know, we have five kids. It's those five plus any others that we can't account for over their freshman, sophomore, junior, and the senior years. And so, that's when we see, and we made significant gains last year. And as data gets finalized, we will bring that to the board. Of course, that's one of our indicators, is the dropout rate and the graduation rate. Those trended in the right direction last year. Graduation was up four some percentage points, if I remember correctly. And I know the dropout rate went down. But that's why these, these numbers here, particularly your first 10 days of no-shows, that's where we get a big hit often. If we don't, if we don't track those students down, get records requests from institutions, and that's how the dropout rate is actually calculated, is cumulative over four years.
I would be curious to see it in March, too.
Sure.
Be happy to do that.
That'd be great, just to compare the two.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy. And Renee is going to stay here. And this is a report that she gave recently to, well, this is similar, very similar to a presentation she gave last week to the Orange Rotary Club. And we have some, she has some updated numbers as far as where we stand with CTE courses and enrollments. And we thought this would be very pertinent for the board to be apprised of as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Renee to give you some information on current CTE programming.
Okay, so you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, just as a reminder to everyone, Virginia's CTE programming consists of the 17 clusters that you see here. This is how the Virginia Department of Ed groups all the different clusters under which you will see pathways and courses. The ones that are listed in orange are ones that we actually have courses and pathways within. We do not have any in energy, finance, hospitality, and tourism, or manufacturing. We did have manufacturing, and we still have the infrastructure for it. We have all of our equipment. We just do not have a teacher at this time to teach that course. So, VDOE structures everything. Like I said, the 17 career clusters, under those clusters, you'll see 83 career pathways. And within those career pathways, you have sequential course completers. So, that's when a student takes more than one course in a pathway, the similar type of course, and they earn a completer. Each of those course completers are made up of a curriculum that has both workplace readiness skills, taught to all students, as well as career skills that are specific to whatever that course is. Additionally, students have the opportunity in these courses to earn credentials. They also have the opportunity for on-the-job training through workplace placements out in the community. And CTSO means Career Tech Student Organization. Every one of our CTE courses have a student organization attached to it. You're probably very familiar with DECA or FFA. Those are Career Tech Student Organizations. So, every one of our Career Tech teachers have to sponsor one of these organizations along with teaching their courses. And I'm going to show you what each of them are as we go through. CTE pathways at Orange County, I wanted to talk a little bit about this, starting in 2015-16, when we met with different groups from the public in the different sectors of employment. And we created a long-range plan, which was five years. And at that time, we had 47 courses with 1,407 students enrolled in those courses. We created another long-range plan, which I'll show you some information from that a little bit later. And in 2021-22, you can see an increase in our course enrollments and students. And then, this past year, you'll see two less courses because of manufacturing, not having the teacher. But also, the number of enrollments, though, have gone up substantially. That's in large part to courses. We added a new course this year, which I'll show you in a little bit, and also the increase in ag. So, each of our students have the choices of coming in and looking at different pathways. So, you'll see here, this is our communications pathway. And within that, you'll see some courses are repeated. That's because they can complete with different ones. So, a student can come in and choose to take, if they're interested in communications, technical drawing and design. And then, if they take one of the two courses in yellow, they earn a completer, which is something that's required for graduation.
And I was going to add, this is, this was the first year, correct me if I'm wrong, the CCCRI is being?
Yes. The CCCRI is being counted as part of our accreditation this year, and that's for the College Career Readiness Indicator. And so, this is the first year that all of this is going to count in that, so. Next is technology education. So, if students are interested in this, they can come in. The pink courses are the foundational courses in these pathways. And then, of course, they can choose from the yellow, and then blue, and then green, as they progress through the pathway. Technology of robotic design is kind of in the middle like that, because you can take either technical drawing and design and complete with technology of robotic design, or you can start with technology foundations and also do that. So, the classes that I just showed you, you can go on. Yep. The technology education and communication certifications that some of our students can earn, if they go far enough into the pathway, are listed here. I won't read them all to you. You're going to see workplace readiness repeated over and over again, because every course has workplace readiness skills embedded in them. And students can take that certification attached to any of those classes. So, the manufacturing technician one and manufacturing specialist are ones that we had when we had manufacturing. We no longer have this, at this time, but we're hoping to get it back. So, down below, you'll see the CTSOs for the teachers who teach these courses. They have the Technology Student Association, and then the robotics are their students' organizations. Okay? Here's another pathway, computer science programming, cybersecurity, and information technology. This one has many different pathways under from which students can choose. And they can, some of these are in the computer science, one that you see Introduction to Computer Science Using Python. Those are relatively new. We started those a few years back because of the Amazon Future Engineers grant that we received. So, we are able to offer that. We have cybersecurity network systems, all of those, that's where our students get their cybersecurity network plus and A-plus certifications. And you can go ahead and flip up to the next one. And you'll see here, some of the certifications are listed here. And then, their CTSO is Technology Student Association, as well as we have Girls Who Code, all the way from elementary up at different schools. Trade and industrial, we have this, I left the mechatronics, the manufacturing mechatronics on here, just so you could see it. I'm really sad that it's gone. You can tell. I don't want to take it down. But hopefully, we'll get a teacher in the near future. So, firefighting one and two also falls under this, as well as cosmetology.
We can just go back just a quick second to cybersecurity, just to keep the board informed as well. Saw some information about the Governor's Executive Order 5, which talked about artificial intelligence and guidelines for AI in schools. And it's, and it's looking like the plan right now would be to embed those guidelines into cybersecurity courses, which would, of course, be part of this pathway as well. So, that is a looming addition. It seems it's going to be coming at some point.
And also into the computer science ones as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the sort of, oh, right there, I think is where we were. Manufacturing Technician One, Cosmetology State Boards. And we have 100% pass rate on our cosmetology, and it's a very young program. We're very proud of that. Firefighter One and Two, Skills USA, the Sea Perch underwater robotics is something that we partnered with Dahlgren for, and it went along with our manufacturing. So, right now, we don't have a sponsor for that. And then, of course, for students who are taking firefighter one and two, they volunteer with their local department. Family and Consumer Sciences, we added a course this year, Nutrition and Wellness. And it's a ninth-grade elective, and, I mean, you can take it in 10th through 12th, but mostly it's ninth grade. And then, it will complete with our Independent Living and Child Development and Parenting. That pathway is probably one of our most popular pathways with students, the consumer family sciences. We also have the Introduction to Teaching and Human Growth and Development, and these are the certifications in CTSOs for this. Health and Medical Sciences, we, the teacher that we hired this year who's teaching the nutrition and wellness is also certified to teach the Introduction to Health and Medical Science, which has been really helpful to our nursing teachers who've always had to take this entire pathway on their own. So, that he, that's a really big help to them. So, if a student comes into Introduction to Health and Medical Science, they can go into nursing, they can go into athletic training. EMT is another one that we partner with the county, and we've had that for several years now. Here are the certifications, as well as the CTSOs for that. You'll see the We Love Dogwood sign there that the children are holding up last year. Dogwood's our number-one partner in our nursing program, and they have been for years. Really appreciate that. Business and Marketing, all students have to take Economics and Personal Finance. We chose, as a division, a few years back to change it from a course that you could take at any time in your high school career to taking it as either a junior or senior, because we felt like it wasn't very relevant to ninth graders. They didn't take it very seriously, and so, we moved it up to where, once the students are getting a little older, they understand the concepts a little better and can get more out of it. Principles of Business and Marketing, Entrepreneurship and Advanced Entrepreneurship, and then Marketing. And this year, we changed our last completer in the marketing to Strategic Marketing, which takes a lot of different types of marketing and embeds them into one class. So, like sports and entertainment marketing, and fashion marketing, and different marketing, they get a taste of all the different types. These are the certifications, the WISE Financial Literacy and Workplace Readiness. And their club is the Distributive Education Club, which is DECA. I'm sure you've heard of DECA. The students that are pictured here are the ones that are doing our Shark Tank event last year. And these are community members who came in as judges, and the students had to pitch their product in front of the judges. And that's always a really popular thing for the students. And I wanted to just add this, because I think it's an important thing to celebrate. Our OCHS was named again the 2023 One of 100 Best WISE High Schools Teaching Personal Finance. So, we won that award again. So, kudos to those teachers teaching economics and personal finance. JROTC, love these pictures. They were just taken last week, in fact. So, I wish I could do some of this, but not even on my best day, back when I was 20, probably, could I have done this? So, these students really get a lot out of this program, not only the physical part, but the leadership part is a huge part of the JROTC program. This is our pathway for that. They can also be on the teams, and then, if they stay in it, they go into the leadership and citizenship part. They get the ASVAB certification, or take the ASVAB certification exam. And the CTSO that they, theirs is called the Raiders Team, and they do compete. This is our automotive program. This is a dual enrollment program that we partner with Germana Community College. You can go ahead and go to the next. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Laura. They can get two different certificates, same certificates they earn through Germana. They can get the Technician Certificate if they take the twenty-four credits. And you can go onto the next slide. And they can also get the Diagnostician Certificate. If a student starts this program first semester of eleventh grade, they can get all of these credits in by the time they graduate and leave here with both of those certifications. And I think we had two students last year. Was the first year we had seniors who actually got through and got both of those. Agriculture is the last pathway, and we have several different interests for our agriculture students. We had Foundations of Agriculture is where they all start. And then they decide if they want to focus in on animal systems, plant systems, or the power systems, where they get into the small engine repair, the welding, and more of the machinery side of things. Students can go in between, though. They don't have... You know, if they take two classes, Foundations and Intro to Animal Systems, and then decide they also want to take something like Horticulture, they can do that. But their completer would be the two that go together. So. And then, of course, you can go ahead. Here are some of the certifications they can get, as well as the student organization is FFA. I reported these numbers as well at the Rotary. So I thought it would be good just to put them up here so that you could see them as well. I think you'll see how much our ag program has grown just over the past, since 2015-16. What you see in the first column where it says paid, those are students who paid the fee to be in FFA. All students who are in an ag class are eligible to be in FFA, but there are dues. So this year, the students and the president... The president of FFA and the sponsors have set a goal that all students who are enrolled in ag classes will become members of FFA. And they're working with some area businesses to raise the funds for students who can't afford the fee and try to get a hundred percent membership. But if you look from twenty-two, 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 twenty-three to this year, and this is without solid numbers, second semester, we already are up over a... Up right at a hundred students from last year in FFA. So, in agriculture, I mean, not FFA. And their goal, I just put goal there because their goal is to have two hundred and eighty-nine students in the FFA. So it's a big goal that I hope they reach it. So that's exciting. So future expansion. This was shared, if you remember, October eleventh, 2022. Dr. Horneck and I presented the long-range plan. This would be the new one for CTE. And I thought it was important to put this slide here just to show you what we hope to do in the future. In each of these pathways, these are some courses that we would like to see added. You'll see in Agriculture, Turf Management. We've already put it on the docket for two years out for the students who are in the... Coming in as ninth graders. Some of these others that we'd like to see. If you look under Architecture and Construction, this is a huge area that we really would love to be able to offer to our students. That's where you get the building trades, the HVAC, the electricity, the plumbing, all of those, and the construction. And unfortunately, right now, we don't have a place for it. We did have just carpentry several years ago. As some of you who've been here a while remember, we had a carpentry program. We had a great teacher. He had a large number of students passing the core craft skills. And he basically built a building out in the parking lot. That's where he held his class most days. And if it rained, that was a problem. So he has since moved on, and we do not have a carpentry teacher. So in order to have a true building trades program, you need to have not only the carpentry, but the HVAC, the masonry, the plumbing, and the electricity. So that's our dream. That's our big goal for the coming years. But again, we need some space in order to be able to do that. But you'll see that we do have goals set for each of our areas. For example, the Health and Medical Sciences, we'd love to be able to add the Pharmacy Technician as one of the classes that we teach, I think, or Medication Aid added to our nursing program. So these are all... You can look at it. I won't read them all to you. But this is part of our long-range plan. And if you would also like to look at that long-range plan in more detail, it is available on our website. And Laura, if you'll go to the next slide. Our website. If you go onto our county website and go up to the district and then over to Departments, you'll see the CNI Department, Curriculum and Instruction. And CTE is one of those pages. I've listed all of the information from both our curriculum elements to what the state gives us, as well as the CTE Long-Range Plan is there if you'd like to look at it. And that's the presentation. Do you have any questions?
And our EMS program was also a recipient of a VACO Award recently as well for the Virginia Association of Counties.
Yes. That partnership between school and the public EMT, that was really exciting. Any questions? Thank you. And I would just like to say thank you as a board for all your support over the years in CTE. We... Our students really benefit from these programs, and we do appreciate your support.
Thank you, Renee.
All right, thank you, Renee. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And last, on the reports section and recommendations, based off the information coming from the September eleventh meeting, we have brought forward a revised draft inclusive of the language as well from Mr. Hopkins that you recommended. And so again, this is... I'm not asking for approval or movement on this document tonight, but we wanted to bring this forward and see if there was any discussion or any other changes or amendments that you would like to see made.
I have one. So in the first paragraph, the second sentence, "OцеPS is committed to involving parent guardians in their children's education to the fullest extent possible." I would like to strike "to the fullest extent possible" and just put period after their education, their children's education. And possibly, I would like to reference the Virginia Code 1-240. Parents have the fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. And OцеPS honors this commitment. I have it wrote down, Laura, so you can have my paper.
I would certainly support that. That sounds fine to me. Essentially, this document is gonna end up just putting in our policies what is already state code. It's what we do, but this idea of parents' rights got to be a hot issue. So we're just gonna tell the parents what their rights are. And we're not making up any rights or giving them rights that they didn't have before. It's all... I mean, everything that's in this document is in the state code. It's just repeating it and putting it in our policies. So I would support what Melissa has said. And I would say, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting and get it moved on.
Yep, put it on the agenda with the warning. Yep.
We will add that language, no problem.
Okay, so Melissa, would you please repeat what you said? Okay, you got it. All right, thank you.
It's kind of... I printed it in black and white, but it's actually in red. But...
I have that problem, too.
It's kind of like lighter, lighter.
We got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll reflect that change and then have it for the next meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Okay.
Now we are down to board calendars. And so we are looking at October, right, Ms. Byron?
Yes, ma'am.
And so there are a couple of conflicts there. So we were thinking that we would just do the work session and the regular meeting on the twenty-third. I know Mike has a conflict. I have a conflict. So...
I think that would be good because I think Chelsea might be back then as well. So...
All right?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And if that's agreeable, we were... And I apologize again for the inconvenience, but that... We would set that up as a school board meeting, correct? Right? So with public comment. Yes, ma'am.
On the twenty-third.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be clear, we're canceling the meeting on the second, and we're making more or less a regular meeting on the twenty-third with the public comment and other things.
Yes.
I can support that.
All right, now flip over to November.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate that very much.
Okay, so for...
To change our meetings, is that really... Maybe we need to vote.
You can certainly do so if you'd like. Yes.
I don't... Yeah. I don't know that we have to, but we can.
Well, we approve our meeting schedule. We start to change... We approved it with a vote for the years. We start changing meetings, I think it requires a vote.
Sure.
What we do, don't we approve the calendar anyway when we're done going over them? We approve this? No?
No, we just... I just talk about them. Yeah.
Just the minutes. Okay, sorry.
All right. So I say we review November, and then we'll just do those two meetings as a whole, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so for November, the meeting will be on the sixth. Then we have a Student Holiday Teacher Professional Development Day on the seventh. The VSBA Annual Conference is the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. And then we have Thanksgiving Holiday, and then the Work Session, our first day back on the twenty-seventh.
Well, I would like to propose, with that November meeting being on the sixth, elections being on the seventh, does anyone have a problem if we combine that meeting as well on the twenty-seventh?
I was actually considering the twentieth. Do it before the holiday. So if people were to go away for the holiday break, Mondays, right after the holiday.
That's true.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. So can we consider doing it maybe on the twentieth? Mr. Hopkins?
I mean, it fits my schedule. I mean, what about the thirteenth doesn't work, or...
So either or is fine with me. The thirteenth is fine. Yeah, the thirteenth puts us right in the center of the month, so maybe that would be better than the twentieth. That way we can, if we're doing both together.
No, wait. I would prefer to have... I don't mind going down to one meeting a month at certain times, but I don't want to get it that we're gonna continue going down to one meeting a month.
No, uh-uh. I just think these two months are exceptions.
Well, I... I'll be honest, holding public comments the night before Election Day doesn't seem to be too practical to me.
So would you care to combine that meeting then?
Well, my choice would just be move it to the thirteenth.
Okay, and still have two meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Ms. Byron, did you get that?
Yes, so we're having one meeting in October. It will be a regular meeting on October twenty-third. We will move the regular meeting in November to the thirteenth and keep the work session on the twenty-seventh.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion. We approve those calendar changes as just presented.
Okay, can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so I think that concludes... Well, except for maybe reviewing the agenda for next month, which I don't really... Till we... They come up with some stuff, we don't have anything on there.
Yeah.
Other than reviewing bills and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and I would add...
JBB.
JBB.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. So can we have closed session certification, please, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to 2.2-3711A, the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel performance of the Division employees authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Okay, can I have a second?
No, second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Roder, thanks for putting the light... Lighting the flag out in front of the school. I think Mr. Anderson had mentioned it. It got turned around quick, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Closed session certification, please, Mr. Jones.
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to 2.2-3711A, the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel or the performance of the division employees authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Can we have a second?
No second.
All in favor by, oh, sorry, roll call.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows, four yes votes, no-no votes, with one member absent.
Thank you. Disposition of personnel actions, Dr. Hornick?
Yes, ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel agenda as presented in closed session.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept that?
Certainly, we will make a motion, or I make a motion, that we accept those recommendations as presented, the transfer salary adjustment, resignation of employees, and employment of staff, extracurricular coaching appointments.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion carries. And with no other business?
Madam Chair, I didn't realize we had a board member comments and questions before the closed session.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 I was expecting it to be after, so I just wanted to bring something to the table. A while back, I suggested an independent audit be performed on our division. I was told that the board, multiple board members, that the Board of Supervisors holds per, our purse strings, and I would need to go through them for this information. I have spoken with members of the Board of Supervisors, and I was told that I do not need to go through them for such information. I was told by another board member that what I'm looking for, I would not find. What I'm looking for is where are we overspending, where can we cut, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just wanted to bring it to the table to propose that we get some bids on some independent audit companies and see what the cost would be to do so. Just to go get some ideas of where we're headed and make sure that we're not, that we can get to the CTE facilities, the new buildings, whatever we need to do, we need to see what we have that we can cut first, so...
Well, I'm sure we can hire a company to do this, but normally, an auditor does nothing but make sure the books balance. That's what their job is to do. They're not to say, this is good expenditure, this is bad expenditure.
But an independent audit would do that, they're not necessarily just an auditor.
They'll do whatever we hire them to do, but I mean, I'm not opposed to what you're saying to do, but if you're going to look at a company that says you can save money here, and you can save money there, that's more than an audit.
Well, and I, I've said before, we're audited by the county's people, so...
Yeah, but that, but that's what I'm saying, that's just an audit to the books balance.
Right.
Yeah, that's not, that's doing our taxes, basically.
Right, I get that, but...
So, this is looking to where we're overspending, where we need to cut costs, where can we cut costs if we can? Just to get an understanding of what our budget is. You know, the other thing that I wrote down here is, you know, if the Board of Supervisors holds our purse strings, then why do we tell them what our budget is? Why don't they tell us what we have to spend, and we have an allowance, and that's what we base our budget on?
That's basically what they do.
That's basically what we do.
That's what they do, yeah.
It comes back that way, I understand. They say you don't, you only have this much. But when we go in and we present adding 5% to 10% every year to a budget that, why? Why haven't we looked at where we can cut costs before we start adding an additional 5% to 10% to the budget?
Well, I think, I think when you get down on our budget, and we are, it's, because we can't overspend that budget. It's against the law. So, I think we've been, always been very thrifty in doing that, and having money left over, and them giving it back to us, I think proves that we, and we've built a great relationship with them to say, they know we're not going out here and just blowing money.
Well, I'm not saying they are, but with any business organization, there's always room to cut cost. Where can we do that?
It's easy, just cut teachers. We can do it. I've done it, right here in this board.
That's right, and it is not crazy.
I fired teachers and laid teachers off to save money.
Why is it specifically teachers, though?
Because that's 80% of our budget is teachers.
Well, I understand that's a, it's salary. Doesn't necessarily mean teachers.
And compensation.
Yes, yes.
I understand that. I just, I'm, that's what I want to know, where can we cut from?
Because I can tell you, my wife is a public school teacher, and she spends a lot of money out of our own budget to stopgap, so what are we going to cut?
I'm not presenting, I want to find out where I can increase the teacher base, not necessarily.
I'm just talking about equipment and supplies, there's some needs there that...
That aren't being met, to find money that's somewhere else in the budget that we could use it for.
Ultimately, cutting at the top of the page or the bottom of the page, you build your budget based on precedent, and then you rarely have room to inflate or deflate. Now, right now, speaking of inflation, I mean, we all know that our dollar is worth less than it used to be.
All I'm proposing is we find out what it's going to cost to do it. I don't understand why we're afraid to look at our budget.
And, okay...
But I'm not sure that, you say that this is possible, but it's going to, I mean, they could... Okay, they'll look at and say, in the second grade, you have class sizes of 18. You could save money if you raised the class size to 22. But, I mean, they can say that, but then they're going to come back to us and, if that... My point is, we probably know more about this budget than anybody that you could ever bring. If you have some idea where you want to save money, just bring it to us.
Or ask to sit down with Dr. Hornick and our CFO, I mean...
But why is this an issue that we, to have somebody that's not involved in the school to look at the budget?
Well, because school budgets are definitely different than any other budgets.
I don't disagree with that.
I would be okay if I knew there was somebody that was qualified to do this.
Well, again, that's what I'm proposing.
And ultimately, when you build your budget, you're going to have to, as an elected board, we're going to have to decide, I mean, you can pay somebody whatever, I mean, if you pay them enough, they'll tell you whatever you want to hear. But ultimately, you've got to look at the line item and determine, well, do we need a school, or do we not need a school? Do we need class sizes at the acceptable levels, or do we whack a teacher and...
And let's face it, we're never going to build a CTE center or anything else on our budget. We're not.
Absolutely, I'm not saying we are.
So, that money is going to have to come and be supported.
But we could afford to pay for a mechanical or another teacher, or find a teacher that would fill that position. That's, my goal is to find out exactly what we're being, what we're spending, specifically. I know you all think that we have total control over this budget, but all I see is a PowerPoint presentation that doesn't really break down into the nitty-gritty. Do I need to ask to see that? That's a possibility. Could I see it? Sure. But the question becomes, I'm looking at a budget that you're telling me is okay, and I'm agreeing with you that it is okay. I'm not an financial analysis, I don't know where we can cut cost. I would love somebody to come in and help us do that.
We could cut costs anywhere.
Right.
We have the power.
Why are you yelling at me? I'm not yelling.
Because I keep repeating the same thing.
But you're not listening to me, I'm asking to give proposals.
You're saying there's some magic person out here that can...
Yes, there is.
Tell me who it is.
I have to find them, fine, if that's what you want me to present, I will find a list of people
Okay.
that will be acceptable, that would be able to do this for us.
It's fine with me.
My practice has been, Mr. Honigler has laid out enough detailed information, it's right there at your fingertips, and I'm not quite clear on what's being asked, do we...
We haven't done one. We do it every year with the board, with the Board of Supervisors. We have not done one here, specifically for the school division.
Now, this is something the supervisors do that we don't do?
No, I'm saying your yearly thing that they do in January, the audit that they do. That's all we've ever done. So, I will, I will find, I will find a list of people, and I will present it, I will send it to Dr. Hornick. And then, we can go from there, and we can find out what it's going to cost.
How much are you willing to spend?
I don't know what the costs are, I've never done it before. So, if you want me to, I will, I will ask numbers too.
I don't either, and to me, that, that's almost...
Again, everybody's...
A slap into our administration's face saying that we don't trust them.
I'm not saying that I don't trust them.
But that's what it sounds like.
But things fall through the cracks, I understand that. I'm not saying that nobody's doing, that somebody's not doing their job. I would just like to find out how we can do it more efficiently.
By spending money on studies?
Yeah.
That costs money, nothing's free.
The school district does it all the time.
Well, I wouldn't support anything like that, so...
Me neither.
Again, Mr. Honigler lays out the information, and anytime you build a budget, it's always built off precedent. And is there the idea that things can be cut? Well, obviously, we're cutting because we have unbilled vacancies. So, I mean, if we're looking for less spending, there you go, sure.
Well, I think Gary does a pretty good job with, when we don't have vacancies to fill, that we, and that vacancy sets open for quite some time, that money that was in that line item for that, he brings it aware as a supplementary, supplemental, and we move it somewhere else to be able to do something else with, so... And I truly believe that if there was an issue somewhere with the audit or our numbers, that the county would red-flag us.
And again, I'm not saying there's something that's going to be blatantly obvious that they would flag us for. This is, the idea is to find stuff that's not necessarily buried, but stuff that, you know, we, we kind of just, it's a day-to-day thing, we just automatically do it.
But I think that also gets...
We've done it all this time, we just automatically pay for it.
I'll give you an example.
It's a nitpicking, because you, what you might be willing to cut, then our staff would say, we can't cut that, we really need this.
Then we just, yeah, but then we need the reasoning why.
That, to me, gets too far in the weeds, too nitpicky.
Well, I'll show you one thing that we did to save money, and it was, it actually inconvenienced our citizens that we serve, and that is, when I came here, all schools started at the same time. That means we needed more bus drivers and norm buses. We've now gone to a situation where we open schools at different times, and we get a lot of feedback from parents that they're not happy with that because of the change. But, that was a cost-saving measure to us. We need less buses, and we need less drivers. Now, though, I will say, those drivers are driving more, more time, so I'm not really saying it was a big savings, but when we couldn't hire bus drivers, having less bus drivers was a big deal for us. So, what I'm saying is, there's an example of where we changed everything to try to make it work better for us.
Alright. I mean by proposal, I will get some more information, and I will bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Alright, and with that, I'll adjourn this meeting.